...in the seasons of sun, rain and snow. For this council with wisdom and harmony make decisions for all who live and work here. That in all what we do will give praise to the God and Father of all. Amen.
Amen.
Please your meaning saying to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you gentlemen. Ms. Ulmer, the roll please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward one.
Here.
Jay Steff, Ward two. Louis Tonsmire, Ward three.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward four. Diane Tate, Ward five.
Here.
Taft Ren, Ward six.
Thank you Mayor. We'll deal with quantity, not quantity about that. Our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from December fifteenth. And we will have a discussion for an extended period of time and an opportunity to look them over. Now would be the chance to make any additions, edits, or corrections, or motions.
Make a motion to approve, Mayor, without any corrections or additions.
Second to that.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I will vote aye as well as we're required to have four votes and there are four of us here. Uh, we have a bittersweet day that we'll start things off with as uh, we'll swear in our new city clerk and deputy clerk and doing the honors will be outgoing clerk Connie Keeling. So, we honored you a little bit earlier and glad that you at least stuck around to do this and we've instructed everybody to keep the doors clear after you're done doing this because I'm sure you're going to be turning cartwheels out the door.
Major outhand please. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and other states of Georgia, that I will in our respect observe the provisions of the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Cartersville and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of State Department and Deputy Secretary of Defense. So everybody.
Y'all have a good night.
Bye Connie, bye sweetie.
All right, years off to a rousing start. We have some other appointments to make, Mr. Grove.
Uh, the appointment of Sean Jervis, General Manager Barnes and Resort Philharmonic on the CVB Board decreed by the City of Cartersville appointee Michael Gordon. Appointment through twelve thirty-one of eighteen, that's recommended for your approval.
Thank you sir. Any discussion on this side? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I will vote aye as well. Four nothing, it passes unanimously. Uh, we have presentation tonight. Mr. Reinhardt, if you'll get us started with that, please, sir.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we have a presentation from our auditor, uh, from uh, Car Riggs and Ingram, sorry.
You could cheat, it's up there.
I'm sorry, yeah. Tom Carmichael will be here to present the fiscal year two thousand sixteen audit.
Thank you. Welcome Tom.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, it's uh, my pleasure to be here tonight and give you this overview of the city's six thirty sixteen uh, audit. I'll be working from a presentation here, but I believe you all have a handout that I'll do. It's the same, same thing, so I'll be referring and working from that. Um, before I get started, you know, I just want to, you know, express uh, our gratitude and thanks to uh, Tom, the Finance Department and all the work that they do and working with us. It's a herculean effort to pull all the information together and complete the audit and we just appreciate all their help and assistance. Um, logistically, before I get started, there's really two documents um, that relate to the audit. There's the audited financial statements, which I believe you have had in your packet. I have also handed out tonight, what we refer to as our required communications, which is a separate document that all audits uh, have that go with them, that accompany it. And I'll refer back there as I can get a little, uh, get on a little further in the um, presentation. So, you know, just quickly, an overview of what I want to cover, uh, just talk a little bit about our firm very quickly. Uh, I want to give you a little bit of information on our audit approach. Uh, I'll touch on the general fund and the results there, the results of your enterprise funds. Uh, talk a little bit about the pension plan and the OPEB. Uh, give you a snapshot of the city's capital assets and long-term debt. Then I'll refer back to that required communications and certainly, you know, have some time for questions at the end, but I'd like for this to be a dialogue. If by, uh, by all means, if there's a question that you have as I'm going through it, please stop me and we'll try to address that, you know, as we're going through. So just quickly, you know, Car Riggs and Ingram, we're the largest CPA firm in the South, twenty-second largest nationally. There's a lot of big numbers on there, forty-two locations in nine states. In Georgia, you know, we've got offices in Atlanta and then in the southern part of the state, Valdosta and Tifton. Um, you know, we've roughly got a hundred and fifty employees in the state of Georgia. But more importantly, you know, what that means for you as our client is that, you know, we do have the resources in dealing with four hundred and fifty-plus governmental clients that if there's some technical issue that we need to bring in assistance, we've got, you know, experts that concentrate, you know, a hundred percent of their time in the governmental arena and we have, you know, immediate access to them. So when I talk about uh, the audit approach, um, basically it's a risk-based audit approach. It's a cascade effect of Sarbanes-Oxley. Everybody's heard that word, you know, from ten, fifteen years ago, which, you know, was put in place by the SEC to address some issues with some large publicly-held companies. Um, those standards have now made their way all the way down to every audit that's performed, no matter the size. And what those standards require us as auditors to do is understand the entity and its environment that we're auditing, perform rigorous risk assessments and provide linkage of the risks that we assess to the actual audit procedures that we perform. And, and when I say internal control, what I mean are the policies and procedures that your management team uh, has put in place to capture the accounting data, accumulate it in the general ledger, and then that is what supports the financial statements that, that we're auditing. So as we understand the internal controls, you know, we'll evaluate how the key controls are designed. We'll actually perform walkthroughs on those key controls. And when I say walkthroughs, we'll take a transaction and literally take it from origination all the way through to its recording into the city's books and records. And then by doing those walkthroughs, we're determining if those key controls have in fact been implemented. So when we looked at the city, you know, and risk assessments as we're required to make, and, and really these, these risks are generally standard, you know, with most municipalities that we deal with. We're looking at economic conditions in that, in that region. Uh, we're looking at revenue recognition. We're looking at accounts payable cutoff, uh, and then obviously with any city and county with compliance with laws and regulations. So in terms, you know, we've assessed those risks, or what was it that we did to assess those? Excuse me, to uh, to address those risks. We tested your accounts receivable and revenue recognition. We actually performed tests for unrecorded liabilities as they related to your accounts payable. And then, you know, we performed uh, compliance testing on sales tax expenditures. So now I'm just going to, you know, touch on the numbers at a, at a very high level. And what I've done is I've laid out the general fund results for the year, you know, and showing you the two thousand sixteen budget versus two thousand sixteen actual and two thousand fifteen actual. And I'm not going to go through every number on here. I'm going to give you a little bit more detail on the revenues and expenditures uh, on a few slides over. But just looking at the actual results for two thousand sixteen, you can see, um, before your transfers, you know, you had a, uh, an operating deficiency of a little more than six point six million dollars. There were transfers in primarily from the enterprise funds of uh, four million nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, there's a little bit of long-term debt that was issued, uh, of a million three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Some other small items, nineteen thousand dollars. So bringing that down left you with a net change for the year, the general fund, of a deficit of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So you, you add that into your beginning fund balance of twelve million two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, leaves you with a fund balance uh, in the general fund at June thirty sixteen of eleven million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And I've got a snapshot that shows you some trends on that and I'll talk a little bit more about the fund balance in just a minute. So the next slide is just to give you a little bit more detail on your uh, revenues for the year, budget versus actual. And again, I'm not going to go through every line item here, but I'll just kind of address the variances there. You can see in your, in your taxes, your actual number came in at twenty-eight million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand versus a budgeted number of twenty-nine thousand, excuse me, twenty-nine million six hundred and forty-five thousand. The bulk of that variance, that eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars relates to, from a budgeted line item related to the recreation bonds.
The shortage, that's primarily sales tax revenue that was short coming in?
Uh, no sir, on the taxes.
Yes, is that sales tax revenue or is that property tax?
Uh, primary, well, it's actually related to the recreation bond, the assessment on the recreation bonds.
Okay.
Um, and it was really a, a, a more of a formatting issue with the budget. It was really an intended use of reserves as the budget was amended, but for budgeting purposes, it was really presented there. Um, so that sort of was, you know, causing the, at least the uh,
Gotcha.
the variance there.
Thank you.
Okay. So to move off the revenues, again, just to look at the expenditures, uh, again, budgeted fifty-one million one hundred and twenty-three thousand versus actual fifty million six hundred and seven thousand. Uh, so under budget, about five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Um, in the general government line item, that variance of three hundred and forty-four thousand, roughly three hundred thousand of that related to appropriations for the school board. And then in your debt service, uh, that hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars was roughly the uh, just a variance in the interest that was budgeted for the uh, general obligation bonds. So when I roll forward, you know, your, your fund balance, and I told you you're at roughly eleven point nine million dollars. So you can see the trend there. You know, we get asked a lot, so, you know, what kind of fund balance should we maintain? And that, you know, that, that answer is certainly, it depends. Every city is different. It depends on, you know, what some of your strategic objectives are. But, but generally, you know, the Carl Vincent Institute, University of Georgia, they would tell you anywhere between three and six months of your recurring operating expenditures. So, you know, for the city, that would, you know, two months, which would be, you know, a minimum, would be roughly six point eight million dollars. So what I've done is I've, I've taken the eleven point nine million dollar fund balance, but I've broken that out between what's unassigned and then what, what the restricted fund balance is. Because seven point one million dollars of that fund balance are the funds that are set aside for the recreation bonds that are still held in, in restricted assets.
So it did go up about six hundred thousand.
Yes, so the unassigned balance actually went up, sure did.
That's the right direction.
Yes, absolutely. And I just, I always like to show that because, again, that number is a snapshot as of June thirty sixteen. You gotta, you know, it's continually moving, moving down as you're, you know, as you.
That's what I was going to ask, because I noted that it was eleven to twelve million and I know that's still got the park money in it, so that pumps that up, so it's an unrealistic number. Because, yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's why I've showed, the red number represents those restricted ones. Yes, sir. Okay, so moving off the, the general fund, just to touch, you know, quickly on the water and sewer fund. And what I've taken is just compared the last two years, uh, you know, side by side here. And you can see really from an operating perspective, um, for two thousand sixteen, you know, four million eight hundred and nine thousand dollars in operating income versus four million four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars uh, the year before. Basically, you know, you had uh, an increase in, in, in sales of about eight hundred thousand dollars, some fees of about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that was offset, um, to some extent by an increase in your expenditures. Primarily your depreciation expense was up about two hundred thousand. Um, there was some maintenance, you know, as you're all aware of, related to, um, of course, the, the infrastructure, but then there were some same coal issues as well. So that was about, you know, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars as, as well there. So anyway, those netted out, you know, to roughly, you know, a little more than a four hundred thousand dollar increase in operating income for the year. So you, you know, you back down your non-operating income and expense, uh, take your transfers out, which, you know, primarily to the general fund, left you with a change for the year of three million two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. You add that to your beginning net position of a hundred million seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, left you with a, a net position in the water and sewer fund of a hundred and three million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, next, I'm just going to touch on the electric fund. You can see, year over year, your operating income, uh, at four million seven hundred and six thousand versus two million nine hundred and thousand, uh, the year before, you know, a very nice increase there. The increase in, in your revenues primarily related to industrial sales of about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then in terms of your expenses, about a million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand of that was the actual cost of the electricity flowing through, you know, from, from MEAG. So, you know, you, you walk down through your non-operating expenses, back at your transfers, you know, you've got a, a net change of three million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. You got a net beginning uh, position of nineteen million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. So left you with a net position at the end of the year of twenty-three million seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So some nice increases on both those enterprise funds, year over year.
I just remind council on this one, these are as of June thirty and there were two rate cuts after that, so you probably won't see that big a number next year.
And lastly, for the enterprise funds, we'll touch on the, the gas fund. Um, you can see, I mean, there were, you know, some uh, large variations in your revenues and expenses, primarily just relating to volume and then, you know, uh, pricing as well. But the, the revenue decline was offset by obviously the cost of the gas as well. So really you're left, year over year, your operating income, three million nine hundred and six thousand dollars versus three million nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand the year before. Um, you walk through, down through your non-operating income and expenses, you know, taking out your transfers back to the general fund, left you with a change in uh, the gas fund of a million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Adding that to your net position at the beginning of the year of twenty-two million two hundred and four thousand, left you with a net position at the end of the year of twenty-three million three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. So again, a nice increase. Next, just want to touch on the, on the pension plan. You know, six thirty fifteen was the first year that the pension plan number actually was recorded uh, on the books. Um, just rolling that number year over year, you can see your net pension liability uh, at the end of June thirty sixteen was twenty-seven million eight hundred and fifty-two thousand versus twenty-five million two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars the year before. Um, again, that is the, the entire liability spread out between the governmental funds and all the enterprise funds. Next, just want to give you a snapshot of the OPEB plan. Um, you can see that the actual, you know, from the actuarial reports, the um, actuarial accrued liability, a little bit more than eleven million dollars. Um, you know, that's at this point, an unfunded uh, liability. Uh, there are some liabilities that are recorded on your financial statements, but it's under the old rules with the pension plans, that will be changing in, in a couple of years to more closely resemble how the pension plan liabilities are recorded.
Good.
Next, just want to give you a snapshot of the city's capital assets. And again, I'm not going to go through, through all of those, but just to tell you that those are original costs. You know, they don't factor in any depreciation or potential appreciation, you know, in, in value of, of those assets. But, you know, total between, you know, governmental and business, you know, uh, over four hundred million dollars in, in capital assets that the, that the city owns. At, at original cost. Um, next, just touching on the city's long-term debt position at the end of the year. Uh, you can see, you know, governmental uh, debt, thirty-one million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The enterprise business operations had total debt of twenty-eight million eight hundred and twenty-one thousand for a total combined of fifty-nine million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Is there any school that, that number?
Uh, no, that is actually, that number was actually paid off. I was going to, I had that number at the top. I believe it was nine... Nine six, wasn't it? Yeah, there was a principal payment of nine six. You know, those funds were brought in and then those, those bonds were, were paid off.
And the revenue balance is primarily water?
Yes.
And then you've got the, that, I mean, the fact that we've got to book the pension liability to me, this colors all this stuff.
Absolutely. That fifty-nine million dollar number, it includes that twenty-seven million eight hundred and fifty-two thousand.
That's just crazy. I'm sorry. That's, that's nuts.
That's the new law that?
This is the new gas bill.
It is. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Don't be too, too concerned about that, y'all.
Yeah, I mean, I'm embarrassed to say as a CPA and if, we're the, not me specifically, but it's our guys, all of us together, we're involved with the folks that, that are setting those standards. I can tell you from the, the uh, the bonding agents and, and, and that, that we deal with, most of them will tell you they, they just throw that number out because it's, it's such a moving target. I hate to tell you that, but that's, that's the truth. Now, you may hear differently, you know, when you, if you're going through that exercise.
And, you know, case in point, relative to that, if you look at the, the stuff that the actuary presented, prepared for you to put in here, it has a fund that is fifty-seven percent. But then if you look at the other numbers that they give to us, the more realistic number is seventy-five percent.
Tom, when you say they throw it out, do you mean it doesn't show up on this kind of a presentation? Or they just mentally throw it out?
Just mentally. They, they, a lot of them do not factor that in.
They just set it aside.
Yes.
It's, it's as if it all became due and payable at once, which...
And, and the reasoning that it was done is that, you know, you know, this municipality, as most in Georgia have, have done what you were supposed to do and that was fund that liability as the actuaries told you to. There were a lot of municipalities across the country, you know, a lot of them have actually, you know, filed for bankruptcy, that they just, they weren't funding anything, you know. And so, other than being a disclosure somewhere in the footnotes, the, the user never really saw what that, that total liability was.
Detroit, Michigan, and I think Jefferson County, Alabama, too, that I remember.
California.
Well, they have a lot richer plans out there. I think there's one out there that I recognize.
So moving off the numbers, you know, and I, I've referred to the required communications that we as auditors are, you know, uh, as part of every audit we do to the governing board, we issue that document that you have there. And, you know, what it is, again, is our formal communication with you. Um, and it's in ti- uh, designed to, uh, address a few things. The first is what our responsibility is as auditors. Uh, it will disclose to you what we feel like the more significant estimates and disclosures in the financial statements are beyond the numbers in the footnotes. Um, we'll give you a listing of any corrected or uncorrected misstatements. I'll tell you, as you look through that, that document, there are, you know, five or six journal entries in there, really of two types. We consider them to be reclassifications that were made just for the presentation in the financial statements. And then the other, others were related to the pension adjustment. And I only wanted to just bring that up to you. As you see those, there's some large numbers in there. We consider those to be really normal, routine audit entries that we would make with any client that we're working with. It's not anything that your, your accounting department did wrong or anything. We actually walked through the numbers and posted those. Uh, actually, the calculations were made after the books were closed, as the actual information came in. So we sat down, pulled that information together. But since it was mechanically posted after that, we just required to communicate those to you. So that's all that is. Then, uh, you know, any other issues that we would deem to be significant to your role in oversight of the city or any difficulties we encountered or any disagreements that we had with management, you know, we would be required to formally communicate those to you in that document and tell you here, you know, that there were none. And that, you know, kind of covers what I wanted to get through. Be happy if there are any more questions to, um, entertain those now. I'm certainly going to stick around. We'll be available any arise after, after the meeting as well.
My takeaway on this is that utilities had a good year and if you remove the uh, impact of the first year of the park bond, that the general fund, fund balance went up a half million, so they're all pretty good. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Tom, on an informal level, do you communicate with our financial department and, and give them thoughts of, I mean, whether it's written down or not, do you procedurally help?
We do. I mean, we, we try to have an ongoing relationship throughout the year, you know, with, with your management team and, and, you know, we, we do talk with them about a number of things, about, you know, if, if it's something unique, they want to run by us. I mean, I can tell you, you've got a really good team and the need for those communications are, are not as necessary as they are with some of our other clients, but we absolutely, you know, discuss with them. And if we see things that, you know, we would say, hey, this, we see this may be done a little bit differently here, not, not good and bad, you know, good, better and, and best, you know, we, we do communicate those.
Mayor, I've got one other question.
Sure.
On, on page three, you know, page four. Can you provide me with an example of, provide linkage of assessed risk to audit procedures? Can you just give me, I mean, I'm not really sure.
Yes, ma'am. Um, a, a good example of that would be, as we, as we look at the risks related to the, the city, uh, one of the things, and, and really with, of, of most of the audits that we do, accounts payable cutoff, uh, is a risk that we see. So our work papers would clearly say, when we document our testing, and in other words, one of the things we do is we get a listing of all the investments that the city has made after year-end. So we're looking at things that happened in July, August, September, all the way until, you know, we complete our work. And what we're looking for are, are any things that inadvertently, you know, maybe it was an invoice that just came in after y'all were closed with the books that needed to be recorded. We're performing that testing, but as we document it, we will be saying, one of the reasons we're performing this test is to assess, or excuse me, to address the risk that we identify of accounts payable cutoff. Thank you. Pretty good?
Can I ask a question? I'm curious, on page sixteen, capital asset? And, and I understood you to say that land is reflected at cost? I mean, some of the land we have was bought in, you know, eighteen hundreds. So how do you, how do you reflect that?
You, you don't in the, in the financial statement. It's one of the, one of the standards from an accounting standpoint is that, uh, capital assets are recorded at cost. You never actually increase them for market value. The bad thing about that is if they, if, you know, especially with a, a, a business, if, let's just say they purchased a, you know, a piece of land for ten million dollars and now it's worth six, do write it down to six, but you never recover it back to, to ten. So, and that, that's actually a discussion that's been ongoing within the accounting community for years is whether things should be valued at cost and whether they should be valued at, or whether they should be valued at fair market value. Some, some items are valued at fair market value. For instance, investment securities, those types of things. Capital assets are one of the few things that are still measured at, or not one of the few things, one of the remaining things that are measured at cost. And one of the reasons for that is the difficulty it is to determine what fair market value would be. And, and the additional cost that you would be required, because you'd have to do it every year and you'd be literally looking to get in trouble, but it, it is the worst.
Right, as, as a, an example, I know we got like seven acres, um, up on the reservoir hill that was bought in the eighteen eighties for a reservoir. It's just sitting up there now. It's vacant. Reservoir's been filled in. Nobody knows what we paid for it. Is that reflected in here?
Uh, yeah, it would be. Now, what the, I can tell you exactly what the cost is reflected in. I, I know definitely it would be, yeah. It may be listed as an asset with just no cost assigned to it.
Yeah.
That long.
Yeah.
So it would not be adjusted to the current fair market.
Yeah. So if, so you got, the total is four hundred and nine million, but if you were to reflect that at market value, it would be incredibly more. Am I right?
Possibly, because some of these, you've got infrastructure assets that have been depreciated, that are prepared at cost that may not be worth.
Let's just talk about land and buildings.
Yes. Just land and buildings. That your land and building would be worth more than what it's valued at here.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
A lot more.
Yes, absolutely. True. And that, that is something that is taken into account from a financing perspective too. Anybody that's looked at, they, they do that. They, they know that.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have a, a couple of second readings of ordinances. Uh, the first one is relative to the two thousand seventeen City of Cartersville Pension Plan and an amendment. Uh, Mr. Grove, if you'll walk us through that one, please, sir.
Uh, this is a, a change that's within the... This is a, a change that's within the council's goals for this year that the Retirement Board has been working on. It's a hybrid plan. It impacts only new hires hired after January first, two thousand and seventeen. It's, doesn't apply to present employees or retirees. What it essentially does is set up another plan, and the, the key thing that it does is change the multiplier in that plan from two percent to one percent. An additional benefit may be paid if the plan is rich enough when the benefit's paid out. It should serve to cut the liability of the city long-term. Depending on how good the investments are at the time those benefits come out, there could be more there for those retirees. We, we don't know that for sure. But this is, like I said, in your goals. It's been reviewed and approved by the Retirement Board, and it's up to you on final reading and recommend for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? There are none. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Passes unanimously. The second, second reading is relative to our municipal court ordinances. Mr. Archer?
Yeah, you have two ordinances before you. The first one relates to making changes with regards to the schedule in, in conducting court, like it provides that if you got five Mondays in a, in a month, you don't have to have it that fifth Monday, and also provides for rescheduling court during holidays like Christmas, Thanksgiving, that kind of thing. The second ordinance provides for surcharges in court costs to be added to a schedule of fines that are permitted by state law and to add interpreter fees. We're having more of that now, where we have to have an interpreter, and those can be added, and other things, surcharges like that are provided for. As I pointed out in the work session, attached to this ordinance is a schedule of updated and revised fines for specified ordinance violations. But there's nothing in the wording of the ordinance itself that refers to that schedule. And, and I would recommend that you adopt this particular ordinance and that the section thirteen dash twenty-four be amended, further amended by adding this language and adding it as, as a subparagraph A, and then changing every other paragraph below that in, in, in order. So, you'll go from A to B, B to C, and you'll add this language as A. Fine amounts for ordinance violations are hereby revised and updated as shown on attachment A here, too. And then go to page thirty, which is the page one of the schedule of ordinances and the revised fines. And at the bottom of that, amended by, by adding the words "attachment A." Can I clear that up? And we'll retype that and get you, get it to you tomorrow.
Everybody understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? And if there's not a discussion, go ahead and make that motion.
Mayor, let me make a motion using the words of Mr. Archer. And, and with the additional document being sent to us as approval, for municipal court approval.
You mean just the words of Mr. Archer about this ordinance?
Yes, sir.
You wouldn't want any other words of...
No. We don't need him speaking. I have a motion and a second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with my vote. We do have a first reading of an ordinance relative to the alcohol ordinance amendment. Mr. Manino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Mr. Watkins was representing this proposed text amendment. He had called me today, apologized as he is unable to be here this evening, but he will be here for the second reading.
Thank you.
This is, this proposed amendment is to the distance requirements for retail package sales of beer and wine. Our ordinance has a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot distance requirement for residential, a one-hundred-distance requirement for residents in non-residential. Well, the MU zoning district actually is both commercial and residential, even though it's listed in the zoning ordinance under commercial, residential is allowed. So, this proposed ordinance, proposed ordinance is basically a clarification for the MU, and it would allow a one-hundred-foot separation to a residence from a retail package store. It stemmed, as I explained during the work session, it stemmed from the proposed rehabilitation of the Wheeler Building or multi-tenant strip center in there on Barto Street between Carter and Jones Street, and particular tenants looking to go in there. And there's some question about the actual distance to a residence. And according to Mr. Watkins, who, like I said, is unable to be here, they have actually talked to that residence anyway, even though the proposed text amendment is in line with we've done, what we've done in other commercial districts.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item? Okay. We'll take this up for final consideration at our next meeting. That will be January the nineteenth. Am I right? I got my numbers?
That'd be right.
I got my math right on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Manino, next item, please.
Uh, yes, this is a proposed resolution adopting the Carterville capital improvements and short-term work program elements of the comprehensive plan. We have to do this annually as opposed to every five years, based on the fact that the city has adopted an impact fee ordinance, even though we no longer collect fees under that ordinance. The financial portion of that particular report's all zeroed out. All the departments within the city that have capital plan have provided changes to that particular document. That document has been submitted to the Department of Community Affairs and the Northwest Georgia Regional Center, North Georgia Regional Center. With that, we did hold a public hearing in November on this particular item, and since then, we've made corrections, changes, and so forth, and we're ready to do the adoption resolution. With that, we recommend your approval of the adoption resolution.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve this resolution about the impact fees.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, once again with my vote. Floyd County Taxes, Mr. Riggs.
Yes, Mayor, this is taxes on our facilities in Floyd County, and it's in the amount of six thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Thank you. Any discussion, if not a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Again, Ms. Oler, all these with my approval as well, since it takes four votes. Uh, next item, please, Gary.
This is our annual dues for the Natural Gas Association of Georgia, and it's in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Gary.
Okay. One of our backhoe trailers, the, needs to have the dual rear, rear axles replaced. The garage says that repair would cost five thousand five hundred dollars. So, we went and priced new trailers, and we have one, we can get a new one for seven thousand five hundred and five dollars. And we feel that's a better use than to try to repair the old trailer.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve the lowest bidder.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gary. Mr. Hostelbrock, you've got the next item, please, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I come before you and ask that you allow us to purchase a transformer to replace, it, it'll go into our inventory of transformers, but we, we completed the, one of the outparcels of the Kroger project, and we take, typically what we do is take a transformer out of inventory and place it in field as it's needed, and then we replace that inventory unit. And it, it becomes a stock item, and that's, that's what we're doing tonight. And we, we've put, put this transformer out for, and got three bids on it. The bid we're asking you to accept is for seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. It is not the low bid. It, it lacks three hundred and ninety-five dollars from being the low bid, but it, it's the lowest total ownership cost over the life of that transformer. So, it, it is the, it is the lowest-cost transformer in that regard. And it's also the transformer with the shortest delivery time, so we're, we're wanting to get our inventory replenished in case another customer comes in, and so that, that factored into the decision. But we're asking that you approve the purchase of the GE Transformer for seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Thank you, sir. Go right ahead.
Don, how, how often do these prices change? Are these transformer prices pretty consistent?
Yes, ma'am.
So, this price would be maybe good four, five months from now?
Yes, and it, it fluctuates with the price of steel. You know, sometimes the, the commodity market for steel may fluctuate, or copper, you know, the components that, that make up this unit, they, they change, and, and the manufacturer changes also. But typically, those prices hold for three to six months.
And, and the vendors you buy them from, do they keep most of this in stock?
No, ma'am. This, this is a, you'll notice on, on one of them, they typically take about nine weeks to manufacture. You put it on an assembly line, just like you would an automobile, and, and they, they take it from the factory and deliver it straight to us on a, on a truck. And so, so it's, it's pre-ordered.
That's too bad. She was getting ready to buy another one.
Thank you, Don.
Yes, ma'am.
He doesn't know where to put it. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Uh, let's see, Mr. Jones, you've got the next two, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Up first, we need to purchase an operational control valve for the Center Road pump station. As you'll recall from the work session, this pump station's a two-pump station. The valve on the number one pump failed back before Christmas, and you can sort of think of this as the on-off switch for that pump. Without the valve, the pump can be run manually, locally, at the pump station. So, we, we could make the pump move water, but it's a, it's a kind of a brutal process because when you turn that pump off without this valve, you get a pipe hammer, you know, a water surge, pressure surge in that system, and it, it would not be the best way to operate it. We did ask for an emergency purchase on this. The total cost is fifty-one hundred ninety-eight dollars, and that does come with a five-to-seven week lead time. So, that was the shortest lead time, which did play into, to our selection, and would ask your approval so we can get back up and running with a redundant pump.
Very good. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bob. Next item?
Yes, sir. We have, we've encountered an issue with the Pettit Creek temporary bridge construction. This is related to the DOT road improvements at forty-one, four-eleven. As designed, the intended method of construction for the temporary bridge was to do a traditional pile driving, where you hammer the pilings into the ground. These pile, there are thirty pilings being installed parallel to our twenty-four-inch water main, and on the inside, I think Rebecca's got the picture up here, it's, it's tough to see from here, the far-left piling, right next to the bean cross in the creek, our twenty-four-inch water line splits those two pilings. I mean, you're talking about a, a gap like this, and with a pipe that's twelve feet deep, and nobody's absolutely certain that it's exactly right there. As you can see, the leftmost piling is actually angled toward the water line, and what they believe happened was the edge of the, the trench that was blasted to put the water line in broke off and is allowing those pilings to angle toward the water main. The solution for that is to back away from driving them by the hammer and to actually drill the holes in the rock underneath the creek. That way, the piling will be set in the hole and grouted in place. There's an additional cost related to that. Our water line is installed in DOT right-of-way. They have the ability to require us to move that line to construct their bridge if, if needed. That cost has been estimated by our contractor that did the water line relocation, both for us and for the Kroger water main, at six to seven hundred thousand dollars. CW Matthews has given us a bid of seventy-eight thousand six hundred twelve dollars and seventy-eight cents to do this rock socket drilling, and I believe, given the two choices, that that's, that's likely the way you'll want to go, so we present that to you tonight.
Is the bridge set up over this?
Yes.
They would never consider letting us hang it off the bridge, would they?
Almost never. I, I wouldn't say never, but it, it's something that would have to be incorporated into the bridge design, because you're talking, you're talking about the twenty-four-inch water main. That's, that's really big to be hanging off a bridge.
Does that handle the bush and feed the...
No, it comes off of the feeder to Anheuser-Busch. This wood, this line does feed the county's Cassville Road pump station, and the last time I looked, that is their single largest purchase point from us. So, this line goes down, that, that could certainly cause them an issue.
All right. Thank you for that.
Well, Mayor, I'm sorry we have to do it, but I think we have to, so I make a motion to that effect.
Second to that effect.
All in favor to that effect?
Aye.
Everybody says aye, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, you've got the next item?
Yes, Mayor, bringing for you a real estate lease agreement brought up to you a few weeks back. Basically, advertised for this property at fifteen forty West Avenue. Contractor would like to place a trailer on this property for DOT right-of-way. Project they're gonna be working on, they have agreed to the lease agreement that was drafted by the city attorney. I recommend approval. This will run through June thirty, two thousand and nineteen at lump sum payment of six hundred dollars. Recommend it for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Hailed right there. Dan, I got two items to add to the agenda. I need a motion to add that item.
Second.
Got three motions and three seconds, and all in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Good. Passes unanimously. Dan, why don't you handle your item first, please?
Yes, Mayor, the first item I have is a professional services agreement for some services. We need to have a firm come in, take a look at or assess our situation, and recommend this for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'm gonna really, you're really interested to read these minutes from this first meeting, Meredith. They're just, we're just kind of firing motions and seconds everywhere.
Yeah, me, too.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold you to those. Chief Carter?
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is renewal of the annual service and maintenance contract for the heating and air system for the Public Safety Headquarters Building. This is a joint project between fire and police. In establishing this new agreement, we did seek new proposals. We had three companies come in. We reviewed all of those. Our recommendation is to go with the low bid, which will be Galgon, with an annual price of sixteen thousand two hundred and nine dollars. Incidentally, Galgon is the current provider already, so we will not have any downtime. This is gonna be paid in quarterly payments of four thousand and fifty-two dollars per quarter. Now, there is a one-time additional flushing charge for a new loop line that was found in the HVAC system. That new loop charge will be at one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. So, in addition to the maintenance contract, sixteen thousand two hundred and nine, we're asking for the one-time flushing charge for an approval of a total tonight of seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And this, of course, is split between the two departments on fifty-fifty. This is also a budget item. We're below our budget item. We are below our budgeted item. We request approval of that amount and authority from Police Chief, myself, to execute the maintenance contract.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Wait, wait, wait. What? Mayor, a contract that you can't sign...
Well...
Yeah, a contract's got to be signed by the mayor and attested by the clerk.
Got it.
If you sign it, it ain't legal.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
I'm kind of concerned now, if that's where we operate.
Smile, Chief Carter.
I'm good, no, I'm good.
So, basically, which the approval would be me and...
Ace, keep them there.
Yeah, just like it all over the country.
Yeah, I know. Okay?
Including the flushing part.
That's right. Any motions, or...
To approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief, while we got you up there, I'm going to throw you a curveball. Now, you've been getting weather briefings all week long. Any latest assessment, something that you feel comfortable sharing with the public?
The latest weather briefing that we had, and we've got another one at 9:00 PM this evening with National Weather Service, it shows us a pretty comfortable margin that we're probably going to be seeing about one to two inches, maybe up to three or four, but we'll know a little bit later tonight. I do know that as far as the city is concerned, we're not really concerned about it being a high-wind event or an ice event. It should simply be a snow event. Public Works, Tommy and his staff, they're already well ahead of this, along with everybody else. We've been conversing about this actually since Tuesday to be prepared for it. Just ask everybody, of course, to stay home, stay safe, stay warm. We feel good with it.
Thank you. Any other business that needs to come before Council this evening?
Just like to mention the passing of a long-term employee with the city who was over our IT and fiber department, Lamar Greason. I know that caught a lot of us by surprise. Just remember him and keep him and his family in prayers, please.
Thank you. Thanks to the Boy Scouts who are here tonight from Troop 15. I gave you the option of leaving right after you did the pledge, and you toughed it out. A little bit longer meeting than we usually have, so... Mr. Archer, do you have something to add?
Okay.
Anybody else? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourned. Did not get a hump out of that guy. We will...